Thank you. Make a motion to come out of recess.
Sorry.
Motion second, come out of recess. Almost in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close the day, let's have it, we are on recess and back into budget hearings. Tonight, we'll start off with the library. And we'll kind of jump around a little bit and just get us through Queen Mine and the visitor center and then finish up the rest of everything else that's wasn't handled on. So with that, I'll turn it over to our city manager, Mr. Shane. And, thank you very much.
Thank you and good evening again. I hope that since we had to have something for the computer rebooted that we can keep the sound going as it was fixed last night by the time we got it done. And hopefully it will remain that way. So anyway, we're gonna, we're gonna change up the order a little bit tonight to nominate some of the department heads that are here that only have one budget. Or one tab of the budget, I guess is more accurate to say. And so we agreed last night to hold the library off, libraries and general front budget. We agreed to hold that off until the library could be here. And based on his witness tonight, just in case there are. For him. And let me just say at the outset that the big, the big change in the library this year's budget over last year, of course, again, is personnel. So. So as you can see there, the difference in the twenty-three budget versus the twenty-four budget
down.
Pretty much amounts to the. Pretty much amount is the difference in last year's wages versus next year's wages. So other than that, very little is different. We actually accounted for a little bit with higher electric bill. Some folks would think that we're gonna sell so many copies that we're gonna increase our electric bill, but on the other hand, if we get the air conditioner out there, hopefully that will reduce the electric bill. So it's kind of tough to say for sure because in the next fiscal year, there will be those two changes. Other than that, there is really no significant changes unless you all have any questions. For Jason.
What's non-cap equipment? I haven't seen that one. Capital improvement?
It's equipment under the capitalization one of three thousand, so any kind of equipment.
Yeah, as I said, I think we use for computer adapter and stuff like that.
A little bit, I think Wi-Fi hotspot, stuff like that.
That would be, Wi-Fi hotspot would be under the contract.
I thought it was operational expensive. Joe, can you work there?
He probably has one of those too.
Anything else, anybody else? On the library? Okay, okay.
Thank you, Jason.
Thank you, Trevor.
Sorry to, sorry to, you know, really offend my turn. Okay, so the next thing that we would like to do, we're gonna for those of you who were walking in when I said it first time, we're gonna, we're gonna move a little bit out of order here. Look at some of the smaller budgets. Now we don't have to sit here all night for ten minutes. So the next one we're going to do is going to do the Queen Mine. And the Queen Mine budget again, very similar to the way it looked last year. There are changes. We do, in fact, we do ensure that Queen Mine separately from our regular insurance plan, going to a mishap that happened long before any of us can even remember being here that, yeah, I know. That led, led to being dropped from our insurance plan. And so ever since that time, we've had a separate insurance carrier and we get a vote for that insurance premium every year separately from the rest of the city's liability insurance operations. And if you have any questions for Doug, with regard to operations, feel praised.
I have a question. Do we have any vacancies or anything out there, or are we good for any time being?
I'm in a stage right now. One of my guys, if not, may end up retiring now. And so I may have one coming.
What do you see as any big outlays? Car repairs?
Yeah, I've got some of the capital improvements. Whatever you do, paint the buildings, fix the windows in the buildings. I want to get a milling machine and a lathe to start allocating my parts, including locomotive wheels. You know, fix the parking lot. I always keep in for locomotive batteries and capital improvements because they're expensive and don't have a good idea. When they fail, they just go during the winter month of November, I'll tell you. So I'm banking for those.
Order them early, right?
And then I've got that fan which I'm working on this year, but it may carry over into next year. That's gonna be not inexpensive.
The motor for the fan.
Of the whole fan unit.
Oh, really?
Cop one of the cars, so that's.
Okay.
Got a twenty week.
I'm sorry, everybody realizes why we have to order a million dollars.
Oh, that, we keep that for, the corner is emergency, because that's a small repair to mine.
This is capital.
Just in case something happens that maybe.
I think Doug is referring to.
Oh, capital, okay, yeah, yeah. I'll have that.
I have a question. Doug, why, why are you budgeting? Why are you budgeting less? Why are you, because you are estimating to go about six seventy-three. I'm talking about the tour and you're going down again. What are you foresee, are you, are you feeling, are you foreseeing? What's the indication? What are the indicators here?
Yeah, keep in mind when this budget is done, this is before busy things has arrived, so we're always, we're just looking at what's projected comes forward. You know, I'm doing this in January, so we have a little bit because the mine tour doesn't get its real customers and still, still starting to pay more.
And if I could interrupt for just one second, looking at the twenty twenty-three budget is, we budgeted four hundred and twenty thousand for mine tours. And for twenty-four, we're budgeting six hundred thousand. So we're actually budgeting up from before. The number that he's using as proposed budget is just lower than the actual.
Why, why would he? I mean, this is the question.
Yeah.
What, I mean, I know, I did see that, but why would you? Because it looks like you're on, on the upswing and you're gonna do actually six seventy-three. Why would you go less than what you're actually gonna do?
Because at the time when I was doing the budget, that six seventy-three wasn't there yet.
Also, this, so you may not do six seventy-three.
But we probably will this year.
I, I think what he's trying to say, Mel, is that your estimates weren't in there yet when you put these numbers together.
Okay, so couldn't we have gone and just revised those so we can have a proper budgeting?
Well, I guess it depends on what you consider proper. I, I, I think it's up almost two hundred thousand dollars from last year, although we're approving that we outpaced that. You can budget conservatively and budget below that, which we do with a lot of funds, or we can go for broke.
Yeah, because I questioned him last year because he was under budgeting. And I remember, and I said, you could not go, you want fifty percent of what we actually doing for twenty. And, and he said, well, this, and this came to us through that four twenty was not, was not a good number then.
Right, at that time, we were coming out of COVID, so it was real iffy on it because of that, we remember, our money's are coming in through schools, foreign visitors, you know, Canadians, which were not even allowed in the country till November last year. So you're trying to predict things that, you know, that are out forward and you just don't know. You know, it's a very, tourism fluctuates, guys. It's not consistent. You can look at the graph in the very front of, get an idea on that.
That's fine, anyway, whatever you're gonna make, you're gonna make. You just, I just want to make sure that you are doing this based on.
Right, it is predictions.
I, I know that, I just want to make sure that you are aware of this. Because last year, actually, twenty wasn't good, twenty-one was really good and we're under budgeted. That's, that's the only question, I just wanted to make sure.
Banking the budgets before I get a real idea of what the busy season is gonna be like.
Okay, all right, that's all, thank you.
I've got a question. Along those lines of what? I guess Mel was trying to get at. If we under budget, there really is no issue if we go over that, correct?
None whatsoever.
So it is better having a little one.
That's the way I've always felt.
Just predicted ribbon. Better to go that way than.
I mean, I think we will, I mean, because you guys are going gangbusters out there. So we probably, you probably will go over what is.
Six hundred, yeah, yes.
Yeah, yeah. And we're gonna do our best to do that. But you get outside things that can affect this, yeah. An example, we talked about earlier, once the school's changing their curriculum to grade, all of a sudden, what I expected coming is gone.
Hey, any more questions with regard to the mine tour?
Yeah, you know, thank you, Steve. On the mine tour, and maybe Doug can come up, I've, I've mentioned this a couple of times, and maybe now is a good time since we're going budgeting for next year. Is there any way we can look at the increase in the, the mine tour cost? This will bring to additional.
We didn't talk about that at the. The melody lane.
I wasn't there, so this is something that I've always, I've spoken to Steve about, the mayor a couple of times. I think this is, we have not raised it with the cost of living. I think we don't have to do it for the locals, but we can have two-tier pricing and we have a price for, and this that's like some money that can be utilized that the city can use.
Yeah, one thing to keep in mind, remember, we're in a partnership with the mine tour. It's not just the city and Freeport is taking a look and making sure that we have enough funds in the bank. Those numbers that they like are not what, they're, they're quite significant, okay? What they feel comfortable with.
I'm sorry, repeat, explain that.
So Freeport.
Yes.
You know, which least expects this, the Queen Mine tour have in reserves certain dollar amounts.
Okay.
That are quite significant. So we need to make sure that we keep building that product to make them satisfied. They will get million dollars, a lot different than what a civil student. To them, it's a dime on the floor. Yeah, and we, early on, I know, council, council person was here when they're the total of Freeport Four. And that's one of their criticisms is that we do not have enough money in reserves.
Doug, this one, I'm giving you on, I need to get more money.
Yeah, and we talked about already a two-dollar increase.
Why not two, make it five?
I did my marketing research, that's how it's going.
Okay.
Yeah, what you do is, is you go around, it's really in December, went around, made a bunch of phone calls to competitive attractions that are that's eight of the number.
Two dollars, I mean, another half of the dollars more, that's something that we can look at.
Right, yeah. And city manager, I've already talked about that, long time ago now.
And maybe it will come. Maybe it will come in front of us in the future.
Yeah, that would require. That will be coming and it's, one thing is, I don't like to change pricing and stuff until my business is even done. And I'm almost out of all my current deterriers. And I'm redoing the website, so it'll all come. You'll see all this stuff happen before July one.
Okay.
Just to add that, we don't want to outprice ourselves though for the families that are coming with, you know, four or five kids and, you know, I mean.
Let me tell you, right now, somebody has made, you are almost all sold out, am I right? Most of the time.
I mean, it's seasonal, right now, well, right now.
Let me tell you, I mean, the two dollars, when a family decides to come down here, the two dollars, they're gonna make a big difference. This is the known fact for tourism. So two dollars, a family of four is gonna be eight dollars. I don't think that we, we issued a decision that'd be made for them to come down here. I know, and I know the market, I'm in the market. And tell you, it will not make an impact on this business at all.
But when you're paying for restaurant prices for them to go out, I don't know.
That's not, yeah, that's fine, but let me tell you, it's not gonna make an impact on this business, on what I know to be.
And to answer what yours funds thing, yeah, well, you have to watch that because our mission, yeah, keep the mission in mind, so it's to bring trust to Disney. It's not to make this whole the money. I just like to make sure that we have enough in reserves and we can find locomotives and that kind of thing. But yeah, making it affordable is very important also. Because that will bring our customers, then they'll be able to buy, they'll go out to eat downtown, they'll buy, we'll see when they're at a museum, whatever. We want to make sure that's done too, that's, that is the tradition.
Anybody else? Thank you for all you do, thank you.
Anybody else? Well, let's go anyways, okay, we're done with Queen Mine. The next one we're gonna do is visitor center, AKA your tab probably says Tourism Visitor Center. Right, right before streets. Right after Camp Nakka, so. The coast. So just a thumbnail sketch on a little bit of history because a lot of that history gets us where we are today. As you know, for a long time, we had the visitor center manager for, gosh, a whole lot of years. She came before I came the first time and she was still here on the top. And then she retired and then we had another visitor center manager who was here until approximately twenty nineteen or late twenty eighteen when she left. We ended up making an attempt to hire a new visitor center manager and we were unsuccessful in doing so for a variety of reasons, but we don't have time for it tonight. So in that interim period of time, we did have a contractor, an outside contractor. And it's a bunch of money that others helped me. We, so we actually contracted with Jen Luria, who was the visitor center manager of its own, twenty nineteen. And that led to a period of no physical presence in visitor center in Disney up until last year when we hired Heather. So Heather has brought her own style and grace to our tourism effort and which we can all agree has been good for our tourism effort. And I think that what you're gonna see with proposed budget tonight departs somewhat. It's not all because of Heather, it is because we, we've always had a longstanding feeling that if our visitor center was right in the middle of the visitors, that it would be more appropriate that if it were somewhere else. But in, in meantime, through all these years, visitor center, after we got thrown out of the last place downtown that we were, that was put a little bit delicately, but people ended that to us in a little over here. We've lodged at the mine tour as a guest of Doug Grant, the Queen Mine Tour, and he's been a very gracious and helpful host. Now, we have an opportunity to lease a piece of property that is very well-known, right? In the middle of downtown, it's right next door to the library and that presents some other advantages to us, having those two operations next door to one another. And is in the process at the present time of being renovated. The entire building is being renovated, so the upstairs will be used for another purpose, the downstairs will be used for the visitor center. Now, the good news is that that's available and we're currently in the process of drafting a contract for that specific place. Been held back a little bit, Joe hasn't been able to be here to work on it, so it's been delayed a little bit, but we expect in the next couple of weeks. To have the agreement that we can take to the landlord and get his approval so we can bring it to you for more regurgitating. The bad news is, is that the renovations that are taking place and Heather and the mayor and I were over there a couple of weeks ago looking at their progress. They're not likely to get in it until probably close to the end of this calendar year and possibly the next calendar year. So, but it will be newly renovated one year, which is, which is a big one. So a lot of the expenditures that you've seen here, particularly the lease payment that didn't exist in prior years, is, is part of what you're seeing for the budget here. This, this budget has one full-time employee, two part-time employees currently on payroll. And so the expenditures for that are based on essentially the current year. Didn't have, we had, for most of the current year, we had two employees, one was a part-time weekender and Heather, and now we've got Heather, who've got another part-time employee. Oh, he was, he's here. Is, and he works five days a week, but less than, less than a full-time schedule. And that has helped us a lot to keep the, not only keep the visitor center operating with a person at the counter, but it has also allowed us to do other things in the community involved with tourism without tying the visitor center manager, being able to get out to those meetings and events. So, so as you can see, the visitor center personnel expense is going up slightly more than just by the cost of what the increases are gonna be, the, we actually have one more employee unavailable, we gotta go with that. On the expenditure side, again, a lot of what you see that's gone up or wasn't there before has to do with an impending move. We, we did budget for a full year of rent, although from the fiscal, from the fiscal year standpoint, it's more likely to be only half a year. I mean, that's what you didn't have to push to the year. So we budgeted those expenditures for a full year knowing that that probably it wasn't gonna be a full year, but we have to, just in case.
Especially if you're doing that way.
Yeah, so the other capital expenditure note is in capital expenditures, we put twenty thousand dollars in the budget, that twenty thousand dollars is earmarked for the purpose of acquiring, I'm just gonna call it a golf cart, for the lack of a better description, everyone will know golf cart is. We have actually been begging the environment and stealing transportation in order to help our guests and our media and our travel writers navigate through town and to get their storage space. And, and of course, Heather is here tonight, if you want a little bit more detail on what she's been doing. She's here, they'll be able to answer the questions that you may have.
My first one would be, enter the capital projects, what's that about?
That's, the transfer is going to the
Oh, that's the G halls, okay.
Why are we budgeting in twenty-five hundred for gas?
Are you talking gasoline?
Gasoline.
Okay, well, we're gonna have to put fuel in the car and fuel in the golf cart.
So we have a car and a golf cart?
Well, we, yes, we have a car so that she can go to meetings outside of town and we have the golf cart running around inside of town.
Why don't you use electric one?
Well, that's possible. I mean, we haven't, we haven't bought it yet, so there's options. Yeah, the, the car was assigned there. In fact, it was assigned there so long ago that every time somebody wanted to use it, we had to jumpstart it. And so with Heather able to use it now, it's still not going very far for many places, but at least it's been used.
Is that vehicle struggling for the for the tourism office or can it be shared by city hall like we used to have years ago?
Yeah, yeah, it can be shared with city hall, it can be shared with Queen Mine, it can be shared with community development. Our community development office is up there too, just in case you don't already know. Because actually, I got it someplace and then when Mel came on board, Melissa came on board, she's working in that same office. So that, that car was taken out of town. So virtually no costs, it was a what do we call it? It was confiscated car.
On the golf cart, it's for twenty thousand, is this in a specific, is it the bay? How many people can it carry? Is this the price now?
That is not the exact price. I, I have printed up different pricing, this one's eight thousand, eighteen thousand. I have a variety of different ones, gas and electric. I was told gas is better, I haven't researched that. Apparently the electric ones are very loud and people tend to.
Electric tends to be very, very, not loud, not loud actually, because it doesn't have a motor. It's usually, it's less noise, I mean, maybe, maybe on those maybe.
Well, okay, so we don't want to get out.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Too far, I mean, no matter what we pay for, it's gonna have to be a sealed bid. Okay, so what we'll do between now and the time we go to that sealed bid is we'll determine the method of locomotion and the size and then we'll put out a spec.
But just, just as, you know, as an idea, I think if we're gonna do it and we're gonna proceed with it, make sure it's enough where it can carry more than two, two people. This is what will be my, if you have, if you have a little visiting thing. I think if we're gonna invest in something, we may, we need to make the best use.
Well, it's probably gonna have, you know, TV camera on it and a couple of other things too. And so, because a lot of the media that has come down to work with Heather in the last year, you know, they're coming from local TV stations, they're coming from PBS, they're coming from AOT and they're bringing their equipment with them. So, you know, they're gonna have, you know, channels aren't as big as they used to be, but they're still well.
And just, just a question, so most of those people that do come here, whether media, whether tourism, whether groups, they always contact you, you are the first person to contact, so you are the host of most of these.
And if they happen to call me, I send a call.
I sent more than one over here, not that many, no. I, I let me just say that you know, me sharing with other mayors in the area, I think it's important that we have a full-time visitor center open. You know, Benson does it, Tombstone does it, Wilcox has one. And we've kind of circumvented that for some time. And I think that increasing our, our, our advertising budget is, it used to be thirty-five thousand, seventy-eight thousand. That's, that's, that's a good thing and also getting sub-credit so that people that are here then can actually navigate this better. So those, those, those are in here too. But I think that's what we're all looking forward towards and that, that's why I want, you know, I don't have any other real questions on this, but I thought I would just share mine. I've talked to other, I mean, we've gone over Tombstone and they're doing that, that highway eighty thing and they have a meeting every month over Tombstone, I don't make it, but. Highway eighty thing and they have a meeting every month over Tombstone, I don't make it, but, but she does. I think that's, we're all working together as a, as a consortium, not just the city by ourselves, it works better.
And also, I think I spoke to Heather, we're gonna have so, so people who know, we're gonna have a printed material with the location of. Different businesses, and it's something that's been out there myself, I hear it all the time, and you told me you were working on this. Thank you, and I think this will be very helpful.
So in fact, start governing grants, sir? Work our way down.
Working my way through. That's the first one, after maybe where we stop later. Okay, so government grants is, is kind of a generic form of saying that other grant. Grants not otherwise defined by transportation or public safety or a couple of other notices where we got them, so. And this is the one, and I know we discussed this two year ago, this is where things like. Sewer grants and water grants and. Bikeway grants and street grants. Go, and so you will recognize a few of these from last year's budget because they were there then too. And the water systems grant, even though we budgeted it last year, we didn't, we didn't get enough. But we're not done, we continue to work on that, using other avenues and perhaps. We may end up with another source of funding for it in the end results, but. You know, but I think you all have a general understanding of the breadth and depth of that water systems grant. And, and, and also. What I consider to be a relatively high-level emergency to start. Getting water pipes and sewer pipes removed and replaced. In areas where there, in some cases, four to a hundred years. So, you know, I know a lot of people thought back in twenty. Oh six, when we opened up the wastewater treatment plant that we could read the cyber at least, but. The reality is, is that we didn't even touch most of our infrastructure. And it's all underground, so you don't see it, and it's a lot. Until you realize how many times a year people are going out fixing broken lines that. Yeah, we indeed have an issue that must be resolved. And it's not only just the utility of water and sewer, but it's also the public safety of water. Well, this being particularly, you know, we're, we're dealing with a separate. System that gravity feeds water into fire hydrants. The quality of that water sometimes creates as many problems as its house. And, and, and we've got a pump in a well up on a mountain that is, is, is sometimes victim to the water table. And so we, we deal with this stuff, but we, we, but we're, the effort in here is. To have the money so that, have the money available. In the budget so that when we finally get one of these grants, we can get to work on it right away, so. I mean, that's kind of the, the gist of, of that, the. Bikeway grants, you know explanation, I know you are thoroughly familiar with those two. And then the bridges grant, by the way, that, that's an award. We received a one point two billion dollar award on that one, so that's money that we're gonna just maybe we'll start spending. In the next fiscal year, the Albert Street Grant is estimated at seven point five million dollars. And we did receive the two hundred thousand dollar grant from the State Transportation Board last month. For the, for engineering services on that, on that particular road. Usually, the State Transportation Board won't. Award a grant for engineering unless they intend to also follow that up. For the actual construction, so I feel pretty good. That at some point in the next fiscal year, we're gonna see a word for that as well, so. That would be a fun construction.
What I'd like to see on this is instead of the FEMA fire suppression system. Just take the FEMA out and put something in there for fire suppression system. Because if we do get the other one, which is the water system, we've got, we've got to put some hydrants in, simple as that, and they need to be. We need to have a grant to do that, so. If we don't have any money there except for a grant, let's figure out what we're gonna need to put fifty to a hundred hydrants in. Go after that grant and it's, it's in here immediately, this is just a place for it, it doesn't change.
We don't have to use the FEMA acronym at all here.
As I said, take that out and just use fire suppression system, and we can use that as the upgrade if we get the, get the water.
Well, actually, the fire suppression system line. You know, we haven't budgeted any money for that because we're no longer calling it a fire suppression system. If you wanna add. Hydrants.
That's fine, whatever you wanna name it.
We could actually, I mean, we could actually add a figure to the water systems grant too. That we could make it fifty million dollars, it doesn't matter.
I know, I just wanted to kind of set it aside just so that it shows up that, yeah, it's fire suppression hydrants, something on that or. So that we know that there's. I, I was trying to say, never mind, we just pick FEMA.
Well, we're not, we're not using more than that, that paid.
Okay, I just. I just think next to having the lines changed, having a new hydrants. More than that, I just want money there in case we get it.
Oh, you, you'd be a grant for investigative, yes, that'll be five hundred thousand.
That's the only change I made, there's no money.
Well, we just, we just made a second change.
Well, that was my question, why zeroed out the fire suppression?
What we did basically is we took it out of one line and. And we put it in the, the fire suppression system showed a grant there, so that was the engineering grant. That money is pretty low exhaust.
We saved our last bill.
So, I mean, we spent, we've gotten the services, we set up. We, we have to get reimbursement in order to pay it in, that's all we've got left to do. So, the line's gonna have to stay there because it's got.
You knew that we lost all the hydrants in the water line.
So, yeah, I mean, the staff worked on this for close to forty years. Only to be told at the end of last calendar year that. The fire suppression doesn't follow. They didn't know what we were doing for three years. So, anyway, the good news is, is that there's still money coming out, so we'll just keep working on it.
I have a question, and the city hall solar system, since, you know, the project is being delayed. Has this grant been awarded, is this in our possession yet, or no?
Half of the grant was awarded, okay, okay, and it's a reimbursement grant, so we haven't actually taken possession of it. Kind of an interesting story, and, and it shows you what the impact of a change in personnel, if you're too young. We had a gentleman at USDA. And we had, we had listed the services of a grant writer. First Arizona to help us write the grant. We went through all that, we got everything submitted, and then they came back and said submit smart, so we submitted smart. And then he came out with a grant award, but he said, I can only award you half this fiscal year, but I can award you the other half the next fiscal year. So I have the, I have the award for the first half of the grant if I have that right now. And that money doesn't have to be spent until like twenty twenty-five.
That's my second question, if we don't use it then.
I was anticipating that.
Yes.
So, now, the other half of the equation is, is that from that point to this point, the gentleman who was working with this on that grant quit. Okay, so, how do I say this tactically diplomatically? The, the person that has replaced him, that is our contact person on the second half of the grant. My first conversation was something like this, you know, we, we never awarded this much money. So, we are, we're working, we're gonna get it, we're just. It's gonna take a little.
Third question on this. For some reason, we didn't get this project. Is there any way? Because we talked yesterday about solar and about pollution, can some. Somehow can this money be diverted, let's say, to do solar for the, for some of the public building, the fire department within the police station?
Well, well, of course, first of all, there won't be enough for any of that because. The amount of money that's been awarded so far.
On money buy?
Yeah, it won't, it won't. That doesn't do much solar, okay, and the power requirements for City Hall. Are relatively light compared to. Buildings in our other operations all use more power than City Hall. So, so changing to another place really doesn't help us. In, in that respect, now I remain a hundred percent confident that I can make the other half of that part. And in fact, somewhere in the next two weeks, I can't remember correctly, the new director for Arizona. Of USDA is gonna be, not gonna be that. And she's gonna be the next person I talk to about this.
I just, we don't, we don't wanna lose it, like twenty, twenty-five, we don't have, just have a.
Yeah, that's, that's money.
What's the two million dollar EPA recycling grant?
Okay, that was presented to you a couple of house meetings ago by Matt, that's a grant. Go ahead, Matt. So that was the grant.
Grant, the glass pressure thing?
Glass pressure, the, the air curtain burner, the steel building.
Do you have it then?
No, we have not been awarded that. Yeah, that's something that we won't find out till August, so I hope it's somewhere in that range.
Anything else?
All right, all right. I think we could go relatively. Fire grants is next. And see you all again. So, and again, this will be similar to what you've seen in the past and. The big ticket is the FEMA grant, which we apply for every year. Try to find out for FEMA what they're likely to award, and then we try to find a piece of equipment. That will have a good opportunity to be awarded a grant, so. That, as a matter of fact, Jim, did you tell me that this was the very first grant submission of this fiscal year? So, so, so the grant, it's already been submitted, we were first, not that that makes much difference. There it is. Basically for an engine?
So, the. In trying to get the extra incentive turnout, is that gonna be under the FEMA grant, or are we going to put in for a, a separate? FEMA grant or any other grant?
Yeah, it'd be a separate.
But still the FEMA or?
So, now, the second line there on both revenues, expenditures says other grants. Okay, that figures, a figure we put in there, not knowing exactly what all apply for, they're coming here. But while we find an opportunity to apply for turnout here, that's where. That's where I'm going. Anything else?
And did we get the vests? That were put in for before? We did get them.
Wanna try one out?
Who saw me doing them the other day?
Okay, nothing else, we'll move on to transportation grants. For those of you who were. At the work session last week with the FAA. We have put hundred fifty thousand dollars in there for entitlement money and. Of course, coming out of our meetings that we had that day with a sense of optimism. I feel pretty confident that next spring, when they come out again, it will be that, actually, we do it inside of that. Any questions? No, there's nothing. Yeah, that, that was ceiling.
So we don't foresee any other ADAC grants?
In the transportation sector, they come around. You know, it's pretty, this is pretty unusual because normally we don't get direct assistance paid out, usually they don't have. FAA money, and so, but they have got, this is COVID-related. Okay, so ADAC has a lot more money right now in their money pot than what they. Because of, technically, so that's actually where that. So, that's not likely to happen quite like that ever again. Okay, Camp Nakon, this is our one new one. For this year, and. Without going into a long drawn-out explanation of Camp Nakon, which you've already. The, the two grants that we received are shown on the revenue side there. And the, you know, the first, first grant actually arrived before June thirtieth, so. What we are projecting is gonna be left at the end of that, would be moved over to use the fund balance for the twenty-four months. So you can see there that we're gonna have, just your eight million dollars, our award, both awards combined were. Five point one, so we have hardly tempted to that at all yet, so, and most of that will equalize our expenses. Now, a state grant. That grant money is reimbursable, so we have to spend it and then. Intervals, she's gonna have to put together a report for the governor's office and send it, and then they'll send us the money. So, I would prefer not to do it that way, but I'll take it for six million dollars, because we have to, it's a little more paperwork for us. So, on the other hand, the Mella grant, they issued a check for two million dollars. Last December and after we do our first annual report. At the end of this calendar year, then they will issue the other million and a half to us, and then that will be totally in our hands. So, we will be liable, of course, to both entities for annual reports. Moving forward until money is exhausted, so, which we anticipate will be in four years. Moving forward until money is exhausted, so, which we anticipate will be in four years. Um, so uh the, the Camp Naco team did the best they could. Um to uh, and, and we made them do this, okay? Um but they had a lot of guidance because um I think you all saw the grant application to develop foundation. And while it wasn't nearly as specific as, as one of our budgets are. Uh they made us budget all the, all the categories that they asked us to budget, so. Uh and of course, up to this point, all of Melon money. Um that we spent has been spent based on that particular document, so. Um actually, although um it, it was a lengthy and difficult process. Because it came back five or six times before it was done. Um the uh, uh it, it actually turned out to be a pretty good business plan. And it's gonna be really easy for the Camp Naco team to really uh get things done in accordance with the business plan that we established for it.
Was Mr. Roscoe the one that wrote the grant?
Bellin Graham was a. Group effort that involved as many as ten people at one time. Um it involved the city, it involved the Naco Heritage Alliance, it involved SHPO, it involved um. The uh, trust, the National Trust for short reservation. And um and it also a couple of other smaller groups that have been involved in Camp Naco since the beginning. So it was truly a group effort. Um the, the state grant, on the other hand, which was a, a little bit easier to do. Um, that was primarily started out as a heritage fund grant for hundred fifty thousand dollars. And Becky and I collaborated on that one, we sent it in. And SHPO asked us to, uh, this was, this was a grant application that was supposed to be done in three hundred words or less. Um, so they had, had some things to it and then they opted to one point two million dollars. And then um. A, an individual from the governor's office got directly involved with us and. And basically told us to revisit that and one more thing, if there's still three hundred, we're not gonna. Um and then it was reported. And so, um, so that was primarily SHPO and City and there. So I wanna, you know. At, at this point, uh I mean, I, I, I lived with these two grants uh from May until December. Uh and, and you know, I, I think. We would all agree, those of us who worked on it, that, that this was truly a collaboration. Uh not one single individual or agency can claim more credit for these than the other. Um and so it was, from my perspective and, and being in this business as long as I've been. Uh was the, the highest level of collaboration to receive grant money than I've ever seen. And it paid off well. And, you know, we had a staff meeting this morning and we were talking about. Not just the grants that we're working on, but the grants that. So we're applying for it, grants that we may apply for in the future. Um what stands out about Camp Naco's financing? Is that. We covered everything, okay? The employees that work out there will be paid for by these grants. Um sure. We'll be involved as staff, but it'd be minimal, it would be no different than what we do from day to day with any other department. Um but when that thing is done, that will be almost entirely paid for by the grant funds and. And, and, and that's the result of the teamwork. We had everybody thinking about something that resulted in. Uh the business plan that we have today. So, uh and I think Becky would be, uh she was sitting here, she would agree that everybody deserves a lot of credit anyway. So, so there we are.
A quick question. The amount of money that we got for these grants was amazing and it was a great effort uh by everybody. Do we feel that that is enough to complete all the projects that need to be done up there or will? There be more research for more grants?
Yes. Do you want me to elaborate? Oh, I'd be happy to. Um, what we know right now is, okay, uh you authorized. Uh seven thousand dollars to update the master plan a couple of months ago. Um and the draft of that updated master plan has already come back to us for review. Um and that includes estimated costs uh based on the changes that we've made in the plan. Um and right now, uh now we, we sent it back to the architect for supply and tuning. Uh but the cost estimate isn't gonna change much. Um when we did it in twenty seventeen, the estimated cost for total renovation was four point six million dollars. Uh that actually formed the basis for the, the award we got from the state. Um that estimate right now is six million dollars. And, and, and that estimate and, and talking with Portman Poster, the architect. Um, uh we, we made sure that he was looking at instruction costs. As they're likely to occur over the next four years, okay? Because this is gonna go one building at a time. And so we anticipate costs are gonna rise even now. So you've got six, eight point one million dollars. And the six million dollars of construction money that we've got in both budgets actually. Is about right now. He'll tell you that he didn't see our budget before he put that together. But it's a remarkable coincidence, so. Um now, should it occur that we run out of money before we run out of renovations? Um, we're anticipating that there may be a couple of buildings that we don't need to, okay? The major change that we made from seventeen to now is that. The two buildings out there, the one mess hall and the one barracks, that have already came in on itself. We're, we're going to preserve those as ruins. In fact, we're doing it right now and uh maybe I'll look at it if you like, but we're gonna stabilize that adobe and we're gonna preserve those as they are. So it's kind of cool in its own way.
Is that where the bees are?
I'm sorry.
Is that where the bees are?
Uh actually, no, the bees were in the non-commissioned officer houses and uh, I don't know. Um, you put, you put some video up on Facebook, the killer feedback. And uh.
I, I have a technical question here.
Okay.
The proposal uh in the budget seems like the entire amount. We, we, we know this is gonna be taken in about three to four years.
Right.
The technical question here, we have it proposed as all in one year. Why didn't we pro- uh prorate it over the three years? We just lumped some in, in, in the next year?
Yeah, and, and of course, as, as you add two more columns next year, two more columns the next year, that's gonna all strip it out.
Okay, so.
And quite frankly, we don't know yet. Uh what, how the process is gonna work, we're still talking about. Which building is number one, which one is number two, which one is number three, and how much will?
So we don't have an idea how much next year, how much of this is gonna be spent?
Actually, there's a um, what's called a GAN chart, you know, that we did with Melon Grant, and if you'd like a copy.
Okay, so, but, but we have it, but, but this is just uh budgeting purposes, we have it all in one year. It's not gonna be spent in that year. I just want to clarify this because it shows proposal, the entire amount is gonna.
I don't think we could do it, we tried.
Yeah, I know, that's why, I just, so it's a technical uh clarification.
So, but, anybody who would like a copy of the GAN chart would have me to.
If you can, email, can you email it to me? Oh, yeah, okay. So next year, we may spend a million or whatever, depends, but. Okay, thank you.
And I'm sorry, you finished with the questions?
Okay.
Any other questions? Okay. All right, uh visitor center, we already did. So over the streets. And um, now, uh of course, in, in streets. The roof allocation, of course, is set by the state. Um it was a pleasant surprise, it was significantly higher than the allocation a year ago. Um, for five hundred fourteen thousand uh. I'm sorry. My head is totally out. It's, it, it wasn't a pleasant surprise, it was a slight decrease. From the prior year, forgive me. Um, and so. We also, in the one cent sales tax, now. That the voters have allowed us to use part of that money for um the bond issue. Um the amount that's going into the, the. The revenue side on this budget is lower and of course, the, the other part of it, as we talked last night, into the junk fund. So, uh now, um, we have amassed a considerable amount of. Uh fund balance in, in this fund. Um and we've got technically that million dollars that's in the budget on the revenue side. Uh use the fund balance is, is the fund. So now, can Matt spend a million dollars next year? Well, it depends on a lot of things, it depends on whether or not he can, in type. You know, uh, uh, he's, he's already got his plan for the streets and that plan. For next year is probably gonna be more like uh six hundred thousand, somewhere there, six, seven minutes. And uh although uh that's not cast in stone at this point, that's based on. What they see, the biggest need is gonna be, so we're gonna hit the stuff that we need to hit first. Um and then, and then go from there, but we're gonna budget the entire amount, because if we can do more, we want them to be able to do more.
Why is the cemetery open close to you and not in the cemetery? Then that's for the graves. Yeah, I just wondered, but it wasn't in your cemetery. You go fly.
Well, from an accounting perspective, it's a lot easier to do it if you're using streets, equipment, personnel. Then we can use both the revenue and the, and, and the expenditures in the same way.
I'm just curious why.
We don't have any dedicated personnel in the cemetery at this point, so.
That's anywhere related night.
Uh but we, we get our supervision.
I have a question, uh Steve, uh Matt, really. Uh on the, will this affect, since we had to split the one percent tax between the general, general fund and the street? I mean, last year we spent seven hundred and fifty, we proposed them to spend four eighty-six, so our. Uh, I mean, the cut in half, has, is this gonna affect? Uh, the work that Matt will have to do in terms of street paving or anything?
No, because if you look at the uh total uh, uh revenue side of streets.
Yeah.
We've actually budgeted slightly more than we budgeted this year.
Okay, and that's will not affect the drainage.
Next year, we're gonna use reserve, so.
Yeah, so.
Go to next page, you'll see eight hundred thousand.
Yeah, so. Because that will have reference to what else.
Now, uh this year, or this coming year, I should say. Uh I mean, we don't have a major thoroughfare like when we did Kipstone Canyon or when we did Visby Road. Um so there's, there's gonna be a large, big hit out of this, it's gonna be all in smaller.
I mean, Samuel Warren needs a lot of work, he knows.
Yes, they do.
No, I mean, he knows that, I mean, it's really beginning to look really.
A lot of word, a lot of word is in his hottest list already.
Yeah, I, I know, that's what we talked about last year and.
I have the, the plan for the street paving for. Still spinning out of the way.
As long as I see him out there, I'll be quiet.
Really?
Yes.
Okay, moving on.
I, I just wanna make a note for the public here is that. We have ninety five thousand dollars just for street lights, basically. And also fifty thousand, almost more, just insurance. So our streets, defending more than lights and some insurance is a hundred and fifty grand a year, so. That's, people wonder why there isn't more money. That right there takes a huge chunk, it's right out of the pocket, it's all. Something I look at every year and just amazes me.
Yeah, and, and the only other thing I wanna add on that is that this is a fund that's already been in existence for eight years. You've done a lot of hard to put that money, but over the last few years, uh and I think. From the feedback that I get out of the community, they're generally pretty happy that we have it available to, so we can't do this thing, so.
Adding up all the miles we have made, it's a lot of miles, so.
Yes.
And there's still more to do.
More to do. Okay, uh Rico Fund. This is the mysterious Rico and uh. That uh, it's the racketeering law, I'm not gonna try and use the whole acronym. And uh, the, the essentially, um, we can receive funding through a number of different avenues. Uh into Rico, one is by uh auctioning. Uh seized assets. Um and, and, and for those of you who've been around for a few years, we. Uh have auctioned off a lot of cars through years. Uh most of which were um used illegally and confiscated by our police department, so. Um, some of it has to do with other types of, of asset mortgages, whether it be. Um, uh cash or cash equivalents. And uh the only thing that we don't get credit for uh in, in, in these seizures is. You know, the drugs are worthless to us, when, when you hear about a seizure for. Uh Matt, there are seizures for fentanyl or something like that. Um, you know. We, we did our job, we seized the, the illegal drugs, those are destroyed, okay? Uh if, if someone manages to sell those drugs and come back this direction with two hundred fifty thousand dollars. By trucking their car in the season, that would get a share of two hundred fifty thousand dollars. We actually have one, that's why that's happening. Um, so, um, those things are certainly not able to be planned well enough to, to, to. The budget, so um, we usually budget uh based on history. We do have cars up for auction right now. And uh, we're, um, yeah, rest of Soul Bank is not around to do the auction for us. Uh so we're gonna, we're, we're, at, at this point, we put them out uh on. Go up something, go, go, go deals, fish, uh Matt issues before successfully, so.
It doesn't look like we're doing well, we only did six hundred and seventeen dollars up here.
Uh and, and that's true, because we didn't do any auctions last year.
Okay, but we have some potential.
We have some on the auction block, as we speak.
Yeah.
So.
I don't have a question, just a comment. I was really glad to see Chief Cox tap into. The fund for. You know, for, for what he did, because this has been sitting idle for some time, and I was actually kind of shocked when. Oh, we weren't using Rico funds. Kind of next, so thank you, Chief.
Yeah, now, uh of course, because it's somebody else's money, that it actually technically all, all was turned over to county attorney. Um, the county attorneys are responsible for uh shepherding funds that are seized through the Rico Act. And uh so, uh we actually have an account, a county jury's office for us that. Are from seizures or arrests that, that we actually do or participated. And then we have to go to the county jury where they should do themselves. And of course, with that permission, we have to tell them. Okay, this is the Arts Commission. Uh this was um. Thank you, it's on here. Uh the Visby Arts Commission, uh you know, with the help of the ARPA fund and that, that you all appropriated to them, they. They did a really nice show over on Erie Street. And I think almost everybody got over that, so. Hopefully, what they did this year will be the same by the next year's. Depending on their intention, and so, um that's what we're hoping to see. Um, out of that was the wanted cigarette machine.
An amazing machine.
So unless there's any questions, we'll move on. Housing initiative, which is not a new fund, but it's. Um, only been around for. This will be the third year. Housing Initiative, which is not a new fund, but it's, um, only been around for, uh, uh, this will be the third year, yes. And, uh, and of course, the, the point of this fund is to, uh. It started out with, with grant money that fixed up the first house and it was sold. Proceeds from that, it's active to here, as revenue, and then that revenue was used to do another house. And then that house was sold, and the whole idea is to use this as a revolving fund, uh, to keep either, um. Renovating or building houses that can be sold. Um, at a price where our general workforce, which includes public safety, public works. Uh, medical care, education, employees, so that those people can afford to purchase a house so they can live for this. Uh, that, that's the mission, and we, uh. We finished five now? I think we've four, finished four, and there's some, oh, so. Okay, the fifth one is almost done, and that street is almost. Yeah, and, and if you, if you get a chance, go over there and take a look at it, it's a nice little house. And, uh, that one will be finished soon, we've got one over on Nighthawk.
Right.
Yeah, it's, uh, was acquired, uh, that'll, that'll be renovation. And, uh, that's, that one has a nice big yard. So, um, so anyway, uh, we're gonna continue along the same vein, at the same time, um. We have been trying to, um. The list of, a lot of people have heard our story, uh, not just with the. Housing Initiative, but also we make a lot of work to do, uh, with, with Hillcrest and what we've done in Saginaw. With the C G planning, uh, we're trying to leverage those success stories anywhere we can. Find, yesterday we were on the phone with Senator Sinova's office, um, the Director of Housing, this Rudolph H. Um, the, uh, legislature scheduled us for a presentation, then canceled us two hours before. It was scheduled to go on, but the, the legislature still needs to understand. How to fund housing, and my idea of funding housing is not tax credits, helpers, my idea of, of. Uh, funding for workforce purposes is, is the direct approach. And, uh, and we, we, we made that direct ask. Of them through the Governor's Office, through, uh, the Department of Housing, and through the Legislature. They got our presentation, you probably will have to get it, uh, give it to them and discuss it, and, uh. Uh, so, uh, our, our hope is that. We can do more houses, and we can have more assistance to do those, do that housing way. And, and, and I mean, it doesn't take a billion dollars to do that one. And, um, but, you know, uh, the trend right now is, uh, we're now using fewer. Lava tears than we used before, um, we're, we're actually, uh, some of this money is going to pay. Um, small amounts of money to construction workers who might not be working elsewhere at the present time. Um, and, and of course, that, those people are all, we step up as we have them. And, uh, so, um, we're, what we will find is we try to double our production, if you will. On that is that, um, in addition to having more funding to double our production. Um, it, it may be a, a different artist when it comes to finding people to do the actual construction work, so. Um, while we're not there yet, I'm sure we'll, by the way, um, and, um. Um, and, and I think, you know, we'll at least do what we did last year in the coming year, uh, and, and by modest goals that we can.
How many do you expect to receive? Do you have an idea?
Um, either four or five.
Uh, the next.
Yeah, uh, you know, the first couple of years, we were worried. Uh, and I think, I think we're still worried, but I think we don't want to make that.
When you say four or five, we have these properties and, you know, possession, possession right now.
We actually have two properties right now in Saginaw. Uh, that are either owned by us or owned by the LLC, uh, and we have two properties in Florida. Uh, both, both of which are located, um, in alcohol or circle, um, that are owned by the city. So, so we've got, we've got lots.
That's great.
Yeah, the one property in, 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 uh, it, it's kind of funny. Uh, both properties in Saginaw are right next door to each other. Uh, one is a lot that we, that we got through friendly foreclosure, and that one was scraped off. And then the dude next door, uh, decided that he wanted to sell his property, so he sold it to the LLC. So, I mean, we've got a couple of choices there, I think the choice will make us to renovate one and build another. But if, if we would decide we wanted a bigger lot for a better house, we could do that too, but we have to be careful of price.
Right.
The big difference is you're paying for some of the work instead of all of it here now. That is kind of slow, voluntary, voluntary. Yeah, so we've got good.
But, but what they, from the, from, uh, we're not, we're not adding, it comes from the sale, I mean, added to the price, so it's not.
Yeah, two guys at STEMBA that are. The leaders, the guys who run it, operate, yeah, there's still a lot of theirs.
And that's what can you do?
So my hat's off to those two gentlemen. Okay, miscellaneous donations, um. Pretty much what it is, um, you know, if you look at the list, you can see fireworks, parks and rags, cemetery. Library donations, movies at the park, all of the activities that you all know and love that we've been doing through the years. Uh, whenever we receive a donation from someone, uh, to help offset the cost of those. Uh, of those things, it shows up here as a line item. So, these are intended to be, uh, you know, small donations except, of course, we always put. A billion dollars in the miscellaneous line, that's for something that, once we start fiscal year. And we end up getting a donation for that's not otherwise identified, we can receive it and spend it. Any questions? The airport. Your board has been looking along since twenty thirteen. Uh, without the benefit of federal funding of any kind, so, um, most of what you see here comes by way of. Gasoline under and handrails. And we don't have a lot of handers, so we don't have a lot of handrail income, but, um. But the people who are ready from us have been very steady through the years. Uh, Eric Swisher's been running his, uh, flight school down there since I was here the first time, and, uh. Um, he's doing very well down there, and has no intention of going across, so. Uh, so, at least we've been able to hold our own at the airport over the years, and then, um, and, and then hopefully with. Bringing the federal funding back into the mix, I don't expect to see a big federal, uh, grant, uh. In, in this fiscal year, because once we get our ability to be funded and restored, then we're gonna have to go through the normal cycle. Of grant applications, and annual meetings, and we'll have to update our airport master plan. And we'll have to engage the services of an airport engineer, so, uh, once we cross that hurdle, there's a lot of work in front of that. You know, so it's safe for me.
Two questions, how do you determine how much, uh, is charged for places like this in the cemetery? Because there's such a substantial difference in what you charge the airport versus what you charge the cemetery and sewer.
Oh, in terms of the, the general fund? Are you talking about the, the internal services line or?
Yeah, we're just a sewer and garbage service.
Oh, sewer and garbage service, well. I'll defer to, they don't have sewer out there.
Neither do we at the cemetery, we have like seven hundred and sixty, I mean, it's budgeted for seven hundred and sixty in cemetery.
Um, there's only one trash can at the airport. But could be possibly the difference, so it's sewer and garbage.
Right.
Yeah, there's no sewer either one.
Right. My second question, you talked about having to find a engineer, what's that going to consist of? What's the requirement for that person?
FAA sets forth guidelines for selecting engineers, and, um, there are, um, actually close to twelve. Engineering firms in Arizona that are on the FAA list that are qualified to do aviation work. And so, um, we would go out for them, and, and their guideline requires us to go out for them every five years. Regardless of how early we might work or don't. Um, and, and competitively bid for engineering firms, and then. Um, we will use our normal process of procurement and selection, uh, to select an engineer, then they will. Be on call for us for the next five years. Um, when we get a project, when we get funded for a project, or we get funded for engineering. And most of the engineering comes out of that, um, hundred fifty thousand dollar, um, grant that we normally get annually. Uh, most of that money is what goes into the engineering costs for the projects, and then once we have. And, well, I think we should have at least one project if we can, I would think. At this point, although we probably have to go get that updated before we can present the funding, but, um. You know, we've been working on, uh, replacing the taxiways since I was here the first time. Um, and even though the runway lights are more recent, um, it, it is, in my opinion, at least a, a, a priority. Because we're, we're using solar powered lights, and, uh, uh, they just don't throw the same. Uh, light out there, and, and they're not, I mean, they come out at dusk, and then when they run out of juice, they're out for the night. Um, so if somebody's coming in at three o'clock in the morning, they may not have any guidance at all. Uh, so, but, um, doing a regular runway light project is. Well, hundreds of thousands of dollars is the best I can tell you at this point, but I believe that's a priority.
A quick question. Our gas revenue is thirty-five thousand, and we're spending thirty-five thousand on buying fuel. We must have, we've gotta make a little money, all right? And that's the whole point, I'm just wondering why. Last time, last year, we had twenty thousand that we bought, and we made twenty-four on it.
Yeah.
Now, I know there's always this reserve that's left in the bank at the end of the year, and it's always hard to make it. Should we be lowering revenue higher than our expense?
Um, well, actually, um, our, you know, we, we, we're projecting a slight profit. At the end of this fiscal year, um, I mean, we can adjust that number, uh. Fuel is more of a convenience, it's more of a service, it's more of an attraction.
Yeah.
Uh, than it is a moneymaker, um, we set the price for fuel. I don't wanna say it out loud, but, um, the margin that we place on fuel. When we get a load of fuel, the price per gallon is marked up, okay? Um, and the, the, the problem that we have is that we fill that tank once, maybe twice. In a year, okay? Um, obviously, more air traffic, we'll be more fuel sales, but over the last several years. Um, that fuel, uh, I mean, we physically have to go in and draw fuel out of the bottom to make sure that we're not collecting water in the bottom of the tank. Because that's fail, but, um, um, but because of the timing of buying the loads. Some years we may show a little bit more product than we do other years. So, that's five dollars per gallon of tank, and, you know, it's pretty, pretty rare when we buy two. Tacks of fuel in the same year.
Do you guys charge, uh, just with the, the price they charge, do you charge a market price, or what kind of pricing do you have?
Well, we, we call all the airports in Cochise County and see what they're selling for, and that factors into how much we sell.
So you said that based on what everybody else is selling?
We try to.
And maybe it's sometimes have cost us a little more than what we sell it for.
Well, that depends now, when the load comes in, we know how much we're paying.
Yeah, I know, yeah, yeah.
And so, um, if, if we don't feel we've got a sufficient markup, but we need to go another ten cents a gallon or something like that, we'll do that.
That's something to look at.
We had to make a significant, not significant, we had to make a decrease, uh, because of how.
Yeah, yeah.
Did we ever, did we ever get any requests for jet fuel? Do we have ever, how many buy from them?
We do, um, it's so far, and, and I'm, I'm gonna say over an experience. Personal experience of about fifteen or sixteen years at that airport, um. The, the demand has never shown itself to be worth the investment. We would have to buy an above ground storage tank, probably not five thousand gallons. Uh, but the, the, the jet fuel users normally have larger capacities than. They have gas users, so there would be more for sale, but there would be a lot fewer sales. The limit is in the length of our runway, okay? Our runway is fifty-nine hundred feet. I don't know who picked it, but that's, that's the length of our runway. Uh, business jets like runways longer than six thousand feet. So, now, that's never stopped the governor's plane landing here, and it's been done. Um, but the safety margin for most of these jet pilots is not there. We can land a seven thirty seven there. No, no, it can, no, seven thirty seven can land and take off on that runway, and in fact, the low capacity of that runway will. Will take, but you'd only wanna do that if you support. That's probably the extreme of them.
Yeah.
But, but yes, it can or does. Okay, next one, please, special revenue and grants. Okay, um. Chief, you wanna elaborate on any of this?
Um, the only real significant change that we'll have from, uh, former years to this year, if you look at it. Uh, we have added in, uh, the Homeland Security Grants, which Mark Park owned it for quite a while. I did apply for some Homeland Security Grants, uh, there are equipment grants related to Oscar's safety, dealing with. Border issues and things like that, um, I can go into detail if you want, but it's basically equipment in the form of vehicles, radios. Things that we need, um, that otherwise I would not be able to afford, and the last. Ask was right around this solid figure that was reflected there, whether I did it or not, I don't, still waiting. Other than that, our, uh, GOHS grants, uh, Department of Justice Grants, all of those are pretty much. Just the normal grants that I tend to apply for on a yearly basis.
Um, and, uh, the, on the GOHS grant, uh, that's Governor's Office of Highway Safety. Uh, the, um, uh, Tim has been making an effort since before he became the chief. Uh, to cultivate relationship, uh, with the Governor's Office of Highway Safety. Um, because one thing we've learned over the years is that if we show a lot of interest in that, they'll show a lot of interest in us. And it, it isn't necessarily cash. Um, sometimes they will award a grant to another jurisdiction that will buy a piece of equipment with it. That two years later, they won't have used yet, and don't understand why it's, you know, sitting around. Um, so cultivating the relationships with the people up there. Gives him a, a leg up on a key equipment that might be available, that could be simply transferred from one community to another. Um, then when I was in Winslow, we were able to secure, um, a, an RV that was outfitted for. Um, DUI control, and they've been using it for five years, and they use it like six or seven times a year. And particularly around special events where alcohol is served. And, uh, it's been a very effective tool for us, motorcycles, uh, for, you know, motorcycle patrol. Those kinds of things, sometimes they realize that they don't have anybody that wants to operate a bike, or can't get certified.
Yeah.
To ride a bike, so, and so it becomes, uh, a, a, a huge paperweight for that jurisdiction, so. They called GOHS and says, say I wanna turn it back in, and then some other jurisdiction, yeah, and then you have cash awards to, to your.
Also on that, you'll notice it went down a little bit, and that's just merely me, um, doing that because I didn't ask for, I'm not gonna. Also on that, you'll notice it went down a little bit and that's just merely me um doing that because I didn't ask for, I'm not going to ask for as much on my next one as I have previously because as you guys have known, there'll be approval process, due it just has given the Bisbee Police Department in the last two years almost two hundred thousand dollars in equipment. So I'm gonna step that down a little bit and cut them a break, maybe give someone else an opportunity because um I've gotten pretty much everything I wanted, so.
So it's an excellent resource. Any questions?
This one, and so what's the one hundred club grant? It's a new grant.
But no, that that grant's been around for a long time. The one hundred club is a uh organization specifically um organized for support of uh first responder firefighters and police officers. They deal with uh fallen officers and fallen fire fighters and escort their families. Um but as part of that, they offer what they call quarterly micro grants. Each grant is twenty thousand dollars a quarter. Um you can get awarded one a year and it's specifically for the purchasing of safety equipment only. Um and I I'm on pursuing one of those micro grants this year.
Waste water? Waste water is, you know, um going to be very similar uh to last year except we are, is a process of starting uh renovations in one machine at a time, which will occur over the next couple of years. Um the first machine that's going to be overhauled is going to be without press, uh which we've already approved. Um and will commence as soon as we can get started if we haven't already. Will be, it will take a long, it will be into the next fiscal year before we're done with that one. Um the next project that we have on tap after that is going to be um the Wasps Falls, the Wasps Falls. I call it digesters, he called it Wasps Falls. It's something like that. Um that project is gonna probably be starting sometime in the next fiscal year, finishing out in fiscal year after that. These all take a lot of time. And that's a three hundred plus thousand dollar.
Yes.
We have a foundation on capital improvements. And it's on the the third page. That's three hundred dollars. And that's uh we had like a, I think it depends on forward what the final cost was. Because prices keep fluctuating. Okay, so of course, you know, personnel expenses are, as I indicated, already been times served. Um in in our um in in the those are not for the contractor. That's for what we call our collection group. Um we have four people um that we employ directly on the collection crew. They're the ones that uh give us fixed broken pipes and and unplug uh you know, outside restaurants where they forget to put in a grease trap and all that funny stuff that they've been doing for years. Those are still direct reports to the city. Um now, um not on your, I'm gonna throw this out here now because at some point in that future, I would hope that we would have a discussion that would need to take some action. Um commission the rate study twenty eighteen. And rate study um starts calling for rate increases in wastewater uh last year. Okay, um we've managed to be able to go ten years now, those out of rate increase. Uh you know, keeping in mind that we've got a little help from refinancing the debt um about the same time, about twenty eighteen. And so you've been able to avoid a rate increase for ten years now. Okay, um if you if you look at the balance sheet from your audit, uh you will see that probably after this year, after the coming fiscal year, um your fund balance will be down somewhere around zero. Okay. I would highly recommend that we have a discussion that leads to a rate increase sometime in the next fiscal year um at three percent. Now, ten years is a very unusual, long time for any wastewater treatment facility, public or private, to go without a rate increase. The projects that we're talking about, okay, we're there now. The factory is old and the equipment needs replaced. And we're gonna have to bite the bullet. We're gonna have to do that. There's never a good time for a rate increase, okay? When I, when when I was here for the first eight years, we had a rate increase every year. Uh we had to 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 dodge flak every year when we did the rate increase, but the rate increase kept the plant running, kept the plant open, kept toilets flushing. And I I know after ten years, it's gonna be a really hard decision to make. But if we don't make it in the next fiscal year, um you're gonna be playing catch-up in 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 years after that. Uh if anybody wants a copy of the rate study, I don't know if any of you still have it, you have it in the office, you're welcome to uh make a copy and and read it. Um I think it's pretty um uh pretty comprehensive and and puts us in a position where um even though I I believe, my belief is that we outperformed what they said we would have to do before we started and we were increases again, but the day is coming. And I think we have the best that day. So now that's a whole nother meeting, a whole different type. We have other people to explain uh how that works um for your benefit, but I want you to know that we're, the the days of operating losing fund balance are close to over at this point. And that's essentially what what happened. When you refinance the loans, you have a fund balance that you put in. The fund balance and we've been working that on pretty similarly. So now, where will that put us? Um I've done a comprehensive analysis of it, but based on what we go for the rate study and uh what other local communities are charging, um that's gonna put us from the middle to the middle. Maybe just a a scotch higher than average, okay? So um so I know that there's a pain factor involved in increasing rates, I know there is. Um but if we don't do it, then we suffer from something different. And I don't think we want to go there. The other thing that we're in the process of doing that we'll be doing before the contract expires is here is gonna start doing a financial analysis of of what it would cost us to operate a plant on our own versus um running a plant with a contract, okay? Uh we talked about this a little bit, the strategic planning game, and there's plus and minus in both cases. And so that will be another decision that you will have to make in the next fiscal year. So just telling you now so you have that to look forward to. You're all in there. Yeah, anytime. Tell us.
Well, under the user base, we basically just put in what would not be a rate increase.
That is not a capital rate.
Yeah, so then I guess my other question is I know electric rates are going up. Why are our electric, why are we thinking we're going to be lower than that?
One of the things that we are going to do only before uh this fiscal year has has expired, um is we're gonna go, there are a good number of inverters uh that are associated with our solar system out there. Uh you can see from our electric bills, you know, five years ago, they're starting to clean up. That's because those inverters are burning out. Uh and we're 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 gonna need to go through and replace all those inverters. The actual panels themselves, other than the ones that people have thrown rocks at, are are in remarkably good shape that they are generating almost a hundred percent of their capacity, which is nice. So so whatever panel that is, we bought it. Um that is is we we just had this discussion uh week before. Um and uh um that is telling me that there might still be some warranty left in in those panels and inverters. So um now running down to a twelve-year-old system uh and and trying to collect a warranty. Um I mean, the warranties on paper, we should be able to to uh take advantage of it and still have them. So we're running that down right now, so but the the constant average of burners not significant uh compared to the whole system. Um and we know exactly which ones are out because there's a little here's not all of it, they tell us if they reduce power or not. So so hopefully we're gonna collect all those and fill them in a recycle bin and replace them with ones that work. And that will bring our power generation back up, I think, there by a significant percentage.
Okay, that's just.
Long answer to a short question. Yeah, but we bought that solar system, so it'll be.
I know this is a little off topic, but I will say that I had a nice long conversation with one of our former employees that now works for their business. And I said, how's your you know, employee situation over there? Instead of we're constantly changing, we've hired two and we lose two. We hired one, then we're down three or four people over there now. So we're having a really hard time even them needing their recruitment's not going too well for them over there either. So just all that in the back of our heads over, can we find people to do what we need to have done? Uh I was they can't find them. I don't know how we've.
And in the wastewater department, we've had, in in the collection group, we've had a turnover of one.
Yeah.
Then the last year, and of course, the contractor has had no turnover.
Yeah, well, he said, well, we hired two. One lasted two days, the other one lasted two weeks and said, this is too much work. I said, oh, okay. Anyway, this, as a side note, I I in the back of my head, I was, wow, okay. We're lucky to be in team marketing.
Okay, questions?
I I have, um and I think maybe this is a accounting situation. If you look at the equipments repair and maintenance, we've been averaging around hundred twenty, two hundred and thirty last year or whatever. What we think that we're gonna end with, two hundred and thirty. And then we went back to one forty, which makes sense. Why jump about a hundred thousand on the repair maintenance? Did we do a lot of work this year that showed up on this year, then we're gonna back to normal? Can you explain that to me? Repair and maintenance?
The job process, sorry. Well, yeah, there was also, we had to pay for inspections for the the Wasps Falls earlier this year.
So they they all went on this year, it jumped, then we go back to normal?
Yeah. Then we go, it's your favorite time. Only to be glad. Well, only be, only competition is the sanitation. Um now, I can um and I and I think here uh would uh concur um that the last two years have been challenging at best um in the sanitation fund from a financial perspective um leading up to and coping with the purchase of not one, but two um random garbage trucks, the large ones, um and the resulting issues, some warranties, some not, that we've had with those trucks since we met. Um I I can say with with pretty good confidence that once we got all those initial glitches from those vehicles ironed out to our satisfaction, they've been running darn near perfect. Yeah. I don't want to say it so that the trust will hear, because they're close by.
Yeah.
Um so um and and of course, uh those were financed on a lease purchase program uh which has allowed us to maintain um the uh the budget as as you have seen in the last few years, we believe that um the sanitation fund is actually recovering financially and will continue to improve to a point. Um what that point is, we'll probably not know until the end of the next fiscal year. This is also a fund where you haven't had a uh increase in in this trash collection in some time. Okay, I know sometime between my quitting and my coming back to work, we've got a recycling bin there, which still exists. Um but uh other than that, it I think it's the the status of its health, I think, is improving at this point. Um and as long as we suffer no other major calamities with any of our equipment, uh we should be okay. But keep in mind, garbage trucks are the most highly most difficult to maintain vehicles that the city can constantly and the hydraulic systems are always, so then then you can see it on the street, throwing your house. Questions?
I just, a little off topic, but for your information, I was talking to people about recycling cardboard wise. I found that B and B lumber actually does save all their own cardboard in both places and bundles it up themselves. And they have somebody to contact them that actually come and gets it from them and takes it over the next so they don't even have to transport it. So that might be a source for you to contact them and find out who they're using. They're good stuff. They'll come and pick it up and take it and I love their painting.
He's he's come into our business?
It's in Douglas, okay? They don't do it over there. And he said, I like it. And so he thought it'd be be better just to save it instead of putting it in the slipstream. And he found this person a little bit, they bundled up and said, so.
Yeah, we had to communicate with somebody over across the line. I don't know exactly who, so might be the same one.
Yeah, that's what made me thankful I was talking to this individual. Oh, well, B and B, they they say that the person comes and gets it and takes it over to the same name, maybe it'll go for us. It's cheap.
All right, a little historical trivia, the very first um company that uh took our cardboard was Douglas.
Oh, really?
Yeah, no, it's not that guy. He's not good. So.
All right.
Anything else?
The what is it, tipping fee?
Okay, that's an, if if that's an interesting term, okay? Tipping fee is the fee we pay to dump our trash at the landfill to the county. Yeah, across the street. So I don't know when that the term was coined, but it's been around for at least fifty years.
We keep a, we kept at least one.
So you know, we're still, we're still benefiting two things. Um you know, I I know that the market for most recyclable materials is uh zero or to plus or minus zero, uh but we still benefit with keeping that out of the landfill. Uh and the other benefit that I can identify is that it's tipping, keeping that we pay, they buy the top. Um it is about as low as you're paying. And we get some of the big cities in the Midwest and along the Atlantic coast, they're like six times what I did. So um so there there is some advantage to having Well, I fear that's, yeah.
I I heard.
Okay, public works grants? Okay, there's just two projects in here. Um and the old Bisbee Sewer Lateral Stinger um is in partnership with USDA, is that correct, Matt? Yes, and uh hopefully, they have already given us, they haven't given us anything, they have granted us uh like twenty-seven thousand dollars uh to do some some small um pilot projects. Um but at the appropriate time, and and again, we need turnover personnel at USDA to slow things down uh everything. And so we're looking at um when we get to do the serious engineering, we'll get a for half a million dollars. Uh the other one is the uh blue upgrade. Uh many of you are aware, we're working just for the county uh to put a reclaimed water pipeline between the wastewater treatment plant and somewhere near the river. Our What our contribution to. Uh, that. As we know it today. Is that they would very much like that water to be upgraded. From E plus to A plus. Uh, we can test our water right now and show you A plus water. Okay, our process is that way. Um, but unless it's certified by any Q as A plus water, it's B plus water. So now, um, because. That's the best of our knowledge at the present time. In the process of gearing up for this project, what we're finding out. Is and we've already had test samples taken. There are constituents in the water. That goes to the wastewater treatment plant, you know, we use. Um, that um. The EPA and thus a Q are starting to look at it. We're testing. Years ago. And that topic a lot of years ago, just a few years ago. Um, and most of that are constituents like heavy metals. So they're taking samples out of our treated everyone. Right now and tested to see if there's heavy metals. And and if so, what they are. And the most likely constituent of course. So and to the degree that our second occurs naturally. Or there is a threshold over which we can. We can't know, so. Um, so we're, you know, we're we're in the process right now. They can reimagine this project. Although to the extent that. Um, and we're probably a year away from this at this point. Knowing whether or not we actually have to upgrade to A plus water. We may have to do something else. Uh, to deal with these other constituents like heavy metals. That will have to spend the money out instead of upgrading to A plus, so but we're nowhere near that. But just know that's the active project. And and that we're budgeting to the best of our ability. So and of course, um, that five hundred thousand dollars. Uh, for the A plus upgrade will come from the DA grant. Questions? Okay, we did combine. So. This lady's grants, we've got a lot of grant funds. And so, uh, there's a lot of different items in here that accumulate over the years. Uh, but for purposes of this year's budgets, uh. You know, there's only uh two or three line items. And um, actually, two over the library. Uh, and I have a million dollar in revenue for grants at the bottom is. On speculation. That if the grant opportunity comes along, but we have already had that one accepted. Questions?
Uh, how about the Office of Tourism, one of the blanked out events?
Uh, the Office of Tourism grants are somewhere else.
You have it here. That's what it did before, yeah, that's the man, yeah.
Okay, it's not the regular.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, uh, that was that special grant that we got last year with COVID money. There was a team, that's all.
That's all, there's no more. Actually, I've had people that said it's it's they saw the board and thinks.
Well, I can guarantee you one thing now, if you're looking for them. Don't never mind.
No, I I had I've had a couple of people that they did see it, they was on the way. And and they came down to Bisbee based on that board, so.
Yeah, they blocked their news, so that.
No, they came down to Bisbee and and went to uh Bisbee Board Day. Okay, uh, the next one is the American Rescue Plan. Um. I'm going to um. When I give you the chance, I'm going to give you an update, um, but I'm going to give you a verbal update. Uh, Mike, is what you're seeing here is that. Um, essentially, uh, the revenue line and carryover balance. At the beginning of fiscal year is nine hundred ten thousand dollars. And um, we already have stuff in the pipeline or business name. Uh, I'm just going to give you the list so that you know what it is and how much it is, so. Uh, you have already. Uh, committed and contracted for. HVA Systems at the library. And fire stations, they can learn to. Um, the contract price for that is two hundred and forty four thousand.
How much?
Two hundred and forty four thousand. Okay. Um, last year and next year, you're committed to an employee retention bonus of twelve hundred dollars. Per employee for every employee that's full time benefited, except the city manager. That goes to a hundred and twenty two thousand dollars. Also on our list is um. We're working on this with bits and starts, but uh, we put twenty thousand dollars. On the list for the uh warrant application for the National Register of Store Places. Uh, as you recall, that's. Um, the application that we sent to Washington and they returned to us. In twenty fourteen, I believe it was. Uh, asking us to do more work. Um, in the last couple of weeks, I have had conversations with Shippo. Uh, and and with the. Uh, consultant who did the application for us years ago. Um, and although the price has gone up, um, Shippo has told me that they are going to. I think right after the first fiscal year announced another round of small grants for these kind of services. Uh, that's where we got the money in the first place back in two thousand and seven or whatever it was. Um. Um, what I'm going to do is try and leverage this twenty thousand dollars with another twenty thousand dollars. And we'll be able to finish that off and send it back to Washington. So so that's not dead, that's still an active project. And um, and since we have such a. Um, positive relationship with Shippo. Over these last few years with the work that we've been doing. With the more ballpark and Kevin Akko and others. Um, I feel very confident that we get another twenty thousand dollars. In order to pick up the rest of the cost of getting that application finished. So call this match money. Um, we had ten thousand dollars in here for public access computers for the library. Um, and one for City Hall, which simply I'm telling you. Um. There's, we put a hundred thousand dollars. In there to replace sewer lines, we spent twenty thousand of that. There's still eighty thousand dollars in the fund for sewer line replacement. Uh, the first pressing grant that we've talked about in other places. Uh, the match for that is seventy thousand dollars. Uh, that went on the arm of this two years ago and remains there. Um, we put some money for some updating for the restrooms at. Grassy Park, Gourd Park, and the Queen Mine Tours. Um, we simply haven't gotten ready to do that yet. Um, there's twenty five thousand dollars in there for a fire truck match. And we have a list of upgrades. Um. For. Every mile right in here, but basically all parks. Um. From the pocket parks to, you know. Uh, potentially, uh, Ramada's at uh. At the Vista and uh, we're we're trying to. Put some upgrades in every city park. From. Ruben T Garcia Park up to the list. And everyone in between, so. Uh, and uh, that list at current time is two hundred and twenty five thousand dollars. So if you take everything I just gave you and add it up, that adds up to eight hundred and eighty one thousand dollars. So this, this fund is pretty well committed at this point, unless you do, unless you choose to change it.
Are we commending to? Darko restroom up there? That was, was that on this?
Yeah, that's part of this.
That's part of the parks?
Yeah.
Okay.
So that part of that two hundred and twenty five thousand will be spent, for sure.
Yeah, that part's committed, that's.
So Steve, why didn't you have it listed for us? So you just tweeted that, why?
Well, I have another list that I've been updating and giving to you on an annual basis.
Okay.
And I'm going to update that list again and give it.
Okay. Couldn't keep up.
Well, I I didn't want to, but I don't want to take anything off because I want you to see what we've actually done.
Okay.
With the money and and quite frankly, you know, a. Very good percentage of that list has been accomplished. So it's it's really valuable to us, we're going to miss them. This, it isn't going to happen again. So that's where we are on that, and I'll try and get that to you in the next few weeks. Uh, next item is the debt service part. And that is where. Needs admitting loans and bond issues typically go. And so, other than, I don't think there's one. Which else there unless you choose to elaborate on.
So payment for the police and care attention bonds. And then a lot of the vehicles, certified vehicles. It's mostly vehicles and pension.
Actually, the vast majority of that has to do with pension. Yeah, so you got the two pension payments, transfers from. Police's buyer plus the transfer. Uh, for the one seventeen, which is now probably a thousand dollar thing. So that same four hundred thousand dollars appears in your budget three times. Then it goes to balance sheet and not a single.
Yeah, the four hundred thousand reasonable accumulation would would go on the balance sheet in this fund. Fund eighty five is. Even though outside the general fund, it's considered part of the general fund. It's kind of like, um, fund eighty six has a debt service reserve, this will have a debt service reserve for the pension bond.
Questions? If we don't spend it, these teams are. And it becomes a a balance sheet item and it's accounted for on the balance sheet individually. Okay, uh. Debt service wastewater treatment plan. I know we've referred to this debt uh several times already in the course of. The last two days and this is basically a transfer. Um, from from the wastewater to the debt service and then. And then there's the next payment. Or payments is the thing. It's it's broken out, it's both interest and. Okay?
Yeah.
New bunch. Uh, not much to report, all the activities. A little bit of interest.
A little more than last year.
Well, like I said last night, that's the holy task of. Interest rate is going up. So that's a positive thing, uh, with you all aside. Um, you know, this this goes hand in hand with the um. With youth commission. And uh, youth commission when constituted. Uh, can make our contributions to council and how to spend this money. And they can always spend it.
Look, I have, let's be clear, so where are you showing the principal for the balance?
It's on the the balance sheet, um. And the financial statements. And I think it's a hundred and thirty.
Okay, yeah, it must just. It it kind of.
Yeah, there's a shovel there, it's it's not a budgeted, you know.
But it is still there.
Oh, yeah, a hundred figures something else there.
Very good, thank you.
Yeah, if somebody asks you, where's the money? Okay, uh, if we're done with that one, we'll go to the Bisbee Bus Fund. Uh, this is the magical. Uh, federal fifty three eleven grant program that funds bulk. Uh, this, as you know, um, for a good number of years now, we've been operating in Bisbee Bus. In partnership with the city of Douglas. Uh, who does what I believe is an extremely good job of. Of managing, being the administrators for this thing and uh. Uh, so our role in it is. Uh, barely minimal, but uh, but as you know, extremely important to um, the public that we serve with it. But even though it's funded largely by the fifty three eleven grant. Of course, we still have to match.
And it's uh, it's gone up. What's, I mean, federal share has gone up from one eighty to two oh four and. Local has gone down, can you just elaborate on worldwide numbers?
Actually, and I'm not sure if you know any more than I do, but our actual share. Comes in periodically and it's actually, we're expecting it not to be as well we budgeted.
Okay.
And you can see that. It's fluctuated up and down over the last several years.
And thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, then we're going down as well, is that?
And you know, funny thing is, is that they more or less tell us how much to expect. And sometimes we get what they tell us to expect and sometimes we don't.
Yeah.
So. Sometimes it's surprise. But the bus continues.
Yeah, they do a good job.
Yes. Okay, we're down to the last gap. And the last gap is the capital improvement plan. Uh, everything. And the confusion comes in because we've had to make a couple of transfers. Of that two million dollars in the last couple of years. Um, and now it's in. Uh, you know, it was, it was in the. Uh, a a transfer from the in the twenty twenty three. And now it's moved up to use of reserves in twenty twenty four. That's for the most part the same money. So anything, because we did not build City Hall in this fiscal year. Everything we had set aside for City Hall got moved up. Uh, into use of reserves. Because as you know, we had totally planned, started putting that money back.
So the the money that were committed or to get from the departments was set aside, we didn't have to.
I think, correct?
Very good.
The only money we used was the money that we used uh to. Um, do the uh, to fill the hole. And that was a hundred fifty, a hundred forty two thousand. The status is is that we're waiting for an opportunity to present itself. Um, and I I think the mayor would tell you the same thing, uh, that I would tell you that before the end of our terms. Uh, we'd like to at least be under construction. And uh, now, uh, it something interesting is occurring, um, we don't see prices going down. But at the same time. Uh, we are, in the last couple of months, we've heard from three different contractors. And while they're not promising lower prices. I think what's happening is they're seeing the end of something. On their work schedule and they're. There's, they're going out looking for work. Now, as. Uh, and and if you listen to The Economist. Twenty twenty four. There's going to be a down here construction. And then more people will be looking for. Now, when more people work, won't look for work, that price is due to that. So not necessarily material, but profit. And so, um, we're just kind of trying to read the TV's right out of the chairman's. So the best time to do this, is we still want to come in below three point five. And I think, uh, and and well, and what else we've been doing is we've been talking to. Um, vendors or vendors representatives. To see if we can use alternative systems than the ones that were spec. To do the same job and result in a lower price. Um, you know, uh, some of the. Call it as crisis counting, that we experienced in the last bid. Uh, we think had a lot to do uh with coming out of COVID, the people gouging us. But but some of the things that we also heard, not necessarily from vendors, but maybe you didn't. Um, we invited them to look at our specifications. And there's a couple of key areas. The most. Uh, important, which will lead to the back system. Where we may be able to significantly reduce costs without sacrificing quality, okay? There may not be as many bells and whistles. Uh, in the system as what we. Uh, in the system as what we had originally specified. But that reduces our price by a couple hundred thousand dollars. Um, that mean, now, contractors, you're also well aware that we will not accept it. Okay, we made that statement already. And so I think new bids, whenever we go out with them. Well, um, the contractors, not just the ones who bid, but the ones who didn't bid, but know what happened. Because a couple of those have talked to us since that time, realize that we're not accepting. Anything that walks through the door, that it has to be a certain amount. And so, and we think there's money to be saved. You know, the HVAC system, we think there might be money to be saved in the, in the window system. Um, and I can't think of anything else off the top of my head, but. Um, was that electrical, oh, the electrical system. So roof system, uh, the roof system is a possibility as well. Unfortunately, the roof system is a more problematic, is that part of it.
How about to revisit the the style, maybe we need to compromise and. Re-adjust style of development, maybe.
I don't.
And it goes smaller.
Yeah, well, we already did go smaller.
Yeah.
Okay, we went smaller by one third. And, um. You know. For those of us who've been living in this area. For the last few years, we like a little bit.
Well, uh, I guess the money, I just, I don't foresee what we have is. I mean, like we said, maybe the prices will will level up, but going back down, I hope so, but. Yeah, it's not gonna be that easy, but, you know.
Well, and it's not gonna be any one thing, it's gonna be a combination of factors, there's. There and and all the contractors who have contacted us, have with us, are aware of the fact that. Um, doing something is generally called value engineer is gonna be part of the process.
I think it's well designed as far as space. And just a matter of that. Being two story. You, it's cheaper than going one story, it's spread out, you got less roof, you got less. Spread out stuff. Yeah, you have an elevator, but that's, that that fundamentally wasn't that much, my, this, right, it wasn't.
Anybody? I was expecting it over a hundred thousand dollar over here, it was under eighty.
So that didn't get, well, that was more.
Not, not anymore, I saw. Cold feeling, this is not anymore.
But you can install that, they have to accept.
Do remember those bids we got, that was two hundred and eighty thousand in there for the soil work, you know, you did for one forty. Yeah, so right there, a hundred and some thousand savings off the, off of what.
I'm not the guest that, the reason I'm just saying, sometime I'll have to think out of the box.
I never give up. No, I did a better.
I'm not, I'm not a very good back up.
Yeah, yeah.
It's only way we'll find out.
Oh, exactly.
Well, sir, okay, so one last, a couple of last thoughts, um. Okay, so we're, we're at the end of it, um, on our schedule. Uh, for the next council meeting is. Um, it's a request for approval of the preliminary budget, and. Preliminary budget is not my budget, you get to do that again next month after, you get to do the final one, okay? Uh, again, the importance of the preliminary budget is that it also sets our expenditure limitation. Okay, so once we approve that budget, you can't put one more dime in it. Okay, or set it down. So, um, and that's my statute, that's not our policy, that's my statute, so. Um, and then, of course. Um, you you've seen the figure for the property tax revenue, uh, that estimate, we did that last night on the very first page. Um, although, uh, you will go through a process that will approve. That sales tax, which will probably, uh, end up in final passage in August. Okay, good for you. Um, it used to take a lot longer, I think we streamlined the process a little bit, I could carry credit for that. Um, and, uh, so. You will actually receive your budget and approve. The preliminary budget at the next council. If you choose to. Okay, however, words in your mouth, you can choose that totally, that we will recommend that you do. Um, since, um, I sent out a memo to you all today, coming to the Magna the Year on Tuesday, uh. Things, so I will have, he had the meeting, um. I, you know, uh, any last questions, any concerns, any additions, any anything? Uh, any second thoughts that you may wanna share with us, please do so in the next couple of days. And we'll be preparing the agenda by Thursday.
So we're going to approve the preliminary, do you anticipate any changes?
We're not planning a single change.
Yes, you're gonna add some stuff to the. To the grant.
Oh, that's right, I'm sorry. So as far as the operating budgets concerned, the operating funds, no. Yes, you see it now.
Any else, sir? That's all I have for today. You wanna have any other question about our permits? Any none, I'll attend a motion.
I think both do adjourn.
Second.
Motion and a second to adjourn, all those in favor, divide by saying aye.
Aye.
Go be it, in our journey.
Thank you, everybody. Especially thank you for doing it, you guys, it's still boring.